The Kansas City Council Business Session for January 24 will now come to order. First order of business is approval of minutes from the Business Session of January 17, 2013, is their motion.
Move to approve.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion, corrections, or additions? Hearing no discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. There are no opposed. Minutes are approved. Next item of business up for discussion is Natural Gas Vehicle Program Update. Councilman Sharp.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, those of us who are second-termers, or in some cases, third- and fourth-termers, are a little more familiar with the leadership role Kansas City's played at national level on utilizing CNG vehicles. And we've been recognized at the national level, National League of Cities, for doing it. But we haven't had an update for a while, and there have been some new developments, particularly involved with the legislation to avoid the fiscal cliff that is very beneficial. So I just thought it was appropriate to have Sam and Mr. Huffer from the ATA over to kind of bring us up to speed and let us and the public know what we're doing on this.
Thank you, Councilman Sharp. Hi, Sam.
Hey.
How you doing?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I want to thank Councilman Sharp for inviting me up. I always enjoy it. This is my favorite subject, is alternative fuels, so...
We got to get you out more.
Yeah. Sorry, sorry. Now, like Councilman Sharp said, a few of you have seen this presentation, so I kind of whittled it down some in the interest of time. So I'm going to get us up to date, going to give you a little history of how we got where we are.
By all means.
And then turn it over to Mr. Huffer to kind of tell what they're doing. So, yes, I am Sam Swerjen, your fleet administrator. And to get this thing going, if you look at the screen here, prepared a presentation just real quick. We have about 3,000 vehicles total. Now, that does not include KC ATA. It does include the buses at the airport, but we have about 3,000 powered units. Of those powered units, about 1,700 use gasoline. And in the state of Missouri, there's a 10 percent ethanol mandate, so about 1,700 of our vehicles use 10 percent ethanol. And that's not consistent across the nation. That's...it is unique to some Midwestern states. We also have about 1,000 units that run diesel. And depending on the price of diesel, we can run up to a 20 percent blend. So if you hear the term "B" than a number, like B-10, B-20, that's the percent of bioproduct in the petroleum product. So like, B-20 would be 20 percent pure biodiesel mixed with 80 percent petroleum diesel. Currently, we are using none, but that might change. Again, with biodiesel, it's...the cost of the fuel at times, like it is right now, is more expensive than petroleum, and it really impacts our budget. So I'm kind of limited on what I can do with biodiesel because it is more expensive. Like Councilman Sharp said, there's been some legislation on the production side of it, so we might be able to see a cheaper price in biodiesel, and if that happens, we'll implement it because we've had success in the past with it. What we're known nationally for, and what I speak on all the time, is our natural gas program. Currently, we have 300 vehicles, and that's growing. We do have other alternative fuel vehicles. And when you look at the 31 there, electric, that's not what you think. We only have a few pure-electric on-road vehicles. Those...that 31 number represents forklifts, arrowboards that tell you which way to go, construction-type equipment. So that's what that represents. And I gave this presentation...this same old one I've been giving for a long time, I just updated. And I gave this presentation to my staff some time ago, so I got to apologize for everybody that's seen this presentation before because the same lame joke is in here. This mechanic said to me, "Hey, Sam, you ride your bike to school..."I mean, school, to work. You know, "What about that?" So I include that, so there's...one squirrel.
Are you the squirrel, or is the bike the squirrel?
Well, it's a combination, but I think he was referring to me.
Okay.
So, anyway.
Did we laugh now?
Sam, just...I don't want to take a vote on it or anything, but I sense that there might be some desire that you upgrade the joke, too.
Well, it's a 10-year-old joke, and it's kind of become my shtick.
Yeah, nobody laughed 10 years ago either.
Talk to Ed. Talk to Ed Ford.
No, don't do that.
He practices at night.
You need more material.
Moving on. So currently, as we speak, about 15 percent of the fleet's using alternative fuels. And like I say, with diesel fuel, they can really jump up fast. But again, the natural gas program is what makes the biggest difference. But just to give you a little history on our biodiesel, we did use...in 2006, we used up to 350,000 gallons when we went to a B-50 blend. But you've got to remember that diesel trucks changed in 2007, and they also changed in 2010. I'll go over that a little bit later. But...and it made it a little bit more difficult to run biodiesel because the filters are really tight. There's a lot of close tolerances on modern-day diesels. And biodiesel has a higher gel point. So, long story short, it plugs the filters. So it's just a challenge you've got to deal with. So the biggest year that we had using biodiesel was in 2006. And then, here's the exciting part about CNG. It's kind of a busy slide, but historically, we've used 500,000 gallons fairly consistently. Well, with some grants, we were able to increase the fleet. So you can see in 2011, for the total fleet, we jumped up to 540. And then just last year, we're up to 620,000 gallons. And that's going to be even more this calendar year as well. And what's really significant about those two years is, like Councilman Sharp was saying, with the fiscal cliff agreement, some tax rebates were included. That's 50 cents a gallon, gas gallon equivalent for natural gas. So that represents about a half a million dollars to the city of Kansas City that we're applying for with the IRS to get a rebate. We have five...we currently have five stations, and I'll show you in just a minute where they're at. Our current price for gas gallon equivalent is about $1.60. We are...right now, are running about a $2 differential between the cost of diesel and the cost of natural gas. So if you think about that, it's a significant savings. Several studies that we've done showed that last fiscal year, we saved a million dollars...in other words, let me put it a different way. Our fuel bill is a million dollars cheaper because we're running natural gas. It would have been a million dollars higher if we had have just stayed the course with And like I say, historically, it's been that way since we started the program in 1998. And this all started under...clear back in the early '90s. And believe it or not, I've been fortunate enough to be part of this since the very beginning, when it started in 1990. This kind of just goes over how we got to where we are. We started off small with one station, then expanded. And we wouldn't be able to do that without grants because the price...the price differential is something that's been happening recently. We started off doing this for environmental reasons because natural gas, historically, has been a lot cleaner than the petroleum fuels. But we aggressively pursue grants. That's how we keep the program going. Money's tight, and we're very proud of the fact that we landed that big $4 million ARA grant that put 174 all-fuel vehicles on the road, and most of them were natural gas. And I know we got to toot our own horn, but that's difficult for me. But...so I was asked to put our awards up there. We've won a lot of them through the years. Most recently, the...
Sorry, Sam, but we want to hear them.
Well, the most recent one was Government Fleet Magazine's...we won their 2012 National Fleet Leadership Award.
Don't press the button. There's a lot of people who may be watching this at some point in time, and they don't have any idea. And we hear all sorts of stuff when we do something wrong.
Yeah.
Go ahead and say what we've done right, and please, go through each and every one.
Okay. Well, the thing that's unique about Kansas City historically has been I compete against other cities like Los Angeles, New York, Houston. And the unique thing about us is, and the reason why we get so much credit, is those cities are forced to do something because of their air quality problems. We've got air quality problems, too, but everything we've done has been 100 percent voluntary. So that's the...so we've been called the largest voluntary all-fuel fleet in the nation for a long time. Now, other fleets, because of this price differential between natural gas and diesel, are catching up, and there might even be a few that have surpassed us. But we're right up there. We are considered a leadership...I do these presentations all the time. This is the one I give, and I'll change the joke.
But you still haven't gone through the rest of the awards, Sam.
Um, yeah.
The next one is the Government Fleet Magazine's 2009-2012 National Fleet Environmental Leadership Award. What's that one about?
The Government Fleet Magazine does an annual...that's a pretty big application, actually. I have a good staff. Jody Frisbee on my staff fills out that application every year. And we were ranked...they have what's called Sustainability Awards, and that's what those two are about. Then we get ranked. And the 100 best fleets is we were ranked 18th in the nation. And again, I'm competing against cities that are mandated to do this.
Do your mouse for a second.
Huh?
Shake your mouse.
Get your mouse.
Or is this going off?
Okay.
That's all right. Just keep reading.
Oh, you guys have it down there? I didn't even realize that.
No, we did.
I'm looking over here.
We did.
It's gone now.
Is it back?
No, that's all right. That's all right.
Just stay...just finish your slide, though.
Okay. And then Kansas City Regional Clean Cities, the 2008 Agent of Change, National Fleet Administrators, 2008 National Green Fleet Award. The 2007 Oxygen Award was a big one. That was...we were recognized as the leader in the nation in 2007. Sustain Lane, again, we were ranked third in the nation in 2006. That was back when we were using all the biodiesel I talked about earlier. And clear back as far as 2001, we were called the movers and shakers. We received that from the U.S. Department of Energy. And then the Kansas City Regional Clean Cities Coalition recognized us in year 2000. So, there you go.
Thank you.
I don't know why it's so tough, but it's hard for me to toot my own horn.
Get over it.
All right. Get over it.
We need to learn to talk about the good things in this city, and you're the person on the front lines here. So we're kind of relying on you to say the good stuff because I guarantee you, when people have bad stuff to say, there's all sorts of people shouting it from the rooftop. So you've got to take on that role.
All right.
And change that joke.
All right.
Yeah, talk to Ed.
All right. Now, I think it's important that we kind of understand the history of all this, too. 2005 was a big year for this city, and it kind of went...the public didn't realize it because most citizens drive gasoline vehicles. But when Katrina hit, the pipeline that feeds petroleum to this area, the Magellan Pipeline, comes down to Fairfax, that's the main petroleum pipeline that feeds this area, it went down. So we had a regional shortage of diesel fuel in 2005, and our prices went through the roof. So that's when we realized, you know, we started studying how vulnerable we are to price shocks, shortages. I had to...we had to get fuel as far away as Indianapolis. That gives you the degree of the problem. And it's happened to Atlanta, too. The Colonial Pipeline went down, and Atlanta was faced with the same thing a couple of years later. So the focus kind of changed from environmental...environmental's still important, to energy security. Because 2005, a lot of different things happened. I'm going to go over them just right fast. I'm going to make this...this is the part of the presentation. I cut a lot of slides out in the interest of time, but I think there's a lot of misinformation about our nation's situation with petroleum, and I think it's important to go over this again because it hasn't changed. In 2005, NREL, the National Renewable Energy Laboratory, said we were into...coming into a perfect storm. And what that means is our consumption was separating from our...as consumption was increasing, our production of oil was decreasing. Okay? And this was...they predicted that there would be high prices, okay? We were going to get in an area of instability. And here lately, because of North Dakota...and nothing against North Dakota, or the North Dakotans, or what they're doing up there, or fracking, or any of that. But a lot of...you hear in the media that it's being portrayed as like the national savior of oil, and that we can drill our way out of things. Well, with the graph that you see here is, historically, the production of oil. The dark green is total production, the light green is the lower 48, and the blue is Alaska. And you can see that there is an uptick there to the right of the graph, and that is North Dakota, okay? They're making millions up there. Nothing wrong with that. Is it going to save us? You know? No, it's not. We're still importing 8 million barrels a day. They're never going to come anywhere close to that. So this whole notion that we can drill our way out of something, I'm just looking at the facts, it ain't going to happen with just petroleum. Looking at the history of the situation, that first uptick after the peak, this is another graph of our oil production. The first uptick was Alaska, okay? Well, that second lower one in the black, that is Bakken. That's consideration of North Dakota. It's just going to delay the decline. And I was in Houston, giving this presentation for Galveston Clean Cities, and in the thick of the oil...there's a lot of oil folks in the audience. And one guy spoke up and said he didn't disagree with any of my graphs because they're all government stuff, and they're from EIA. He said, "Well, you don't have anything from the industry." So I took note of that, just like I will the joke. And I put up BP, and the red is what we're importing. This is from their industry. This is not from the government. This is from the BP, British Petroleum Statistical Review, that agrees, basically, with EIA. We're importing about 8 million barrels a day, so even from their own industry. So that...the slide that we showed earlier of NREL, 2005, still holds true today. There's still a wide gap between what we consume and what we produce. And, real quick, looking to the far right, this is global oil production. This is the reason why things in 2005 was a real game-changer. If you look over to the right, well, actually, following along the years, starting there in 1980, as demand increased, production increased. And we went happily along our way. This is globally, right up until 2005. And since 2005 until now, if we look at the far right and analyze it, despite demand, global production has remained flat. And that's what's causing the instability. Demand has outstripped supply. And this is one slide that I added that I thought was almost kind of comical. Our own EIA, Department of Energy, is saying that they're expecting global, that, you know, to do just like our domestic supply and peak at some point. And so this is their predictions, and they're saying that that big wide gap there is unidentified projects. I mean, we're supposed to meet demand with what? Because if you look at what's been discovered, the gigantic oil fields, were all discovered 50 years ago. We've already tapped them, we're already, you know, drawing oil out of them. So I call the ones there in the '50s and the '60s the water mains. I know Terry Leeds is here, I'm sorry, Terry. And the ones from 2000 to 2006 down there are soda straws. So we're relying on soda straws, thousands of them, to replace the big water mains of Saudi Arabia, Venezuela, Russia, United States. So we're going trying to the Arctic. Anyway, and it's not a partisan thing. The GAO has said this, George Bush said this, Barack Obama said this, our military has said the same thing. I mean, that...this was in 2010. Nobody's talking about global oil production being at 118 million barrels a day anymore. That number's just not realistic. So I agree with the IEA in saying that the era of cheap oil is over. So the whole point of this whole big deal is just to reiterate the fact that I think we're still...the decision we made clear back in the early '90s was the correct one to make. Nothing's changed. We made the right decision. Because we just got to go back to 2008 to see that diesel fuel...the first price shock, diesel fuel shot up to just about $5 a gallon. And a lot of people say, "Well, what's happened? How come, you know, how come it's not $7, $8 a gallon?" This graph here is vehicle miles traveled. And if you look, you can see that from 2005 until now, in the United States, we were driving less, by a lot. I mean, we...that's what's really saved the thing because that correlates exactly with the supply-demand problem I was talking about earlier. So we're back to square one. So what's our best choice? For large trucks, the choices I have today, we still think natural gas is the right way to go. There are some other promising technologies out there. I'm not poo-pooing them. I'm just saying that for what we're doing, the best bang for the buck is still natural gas. You know, historically, it's been...it hasn't got any respect, but it's starting to get more respect all the time. More people are joining us. Why? Because it's cleaner. It's still cleaner. It's still cheaper, and it's domestic. And just real quickly, a lot of people that I talk to want to compare natural gas vehicles with old diesels, and they ask me, "Do they get the same mileage?" And I say, "No, the natural gas vehicles get slightly less mileage than your old diesel one." But if you compare it to a new diesel, they get comparable mileage. And the reason why is because to get diesels in that little bitty clean green box down there to lower the particulates and lower the other pollutants that are in diesel, it's a lot harder to do. In 2007, and again in 2010, we even had to change the formulation of the fuel itself to get...remove all the sulfur. And that's what that little...we had to go from 500 parts per million down to 15 parts per million, just so the after-treatment devices would work. And the reason why we had to do that is because diesel fuel is very inherently dirty. The molecule on the bottom is the chemical soup that diesel fuel is. Methane is natural gas, CH4. It's 80 percent hydrogen. So it's inherently cleaner, easier to clean up. A simple catalytic converter can do it. And I'm not one of these guys that's going to tell you, as far as our domestic reserves, that we have 100 years' supply. I'm more in the camp that we'll see because I think it's...there is a little bit of hype there. But I can tell you that for the trucks that we buy today, we have plenty of supply, and it's more...it's going to be more stable than petroleum. I don't know about the 100-year supply. We'll, you know, we'll see about that. But for the trucks and equipment that we buy today, natural...for their lifespan, natural gas is going to be more...a more stable, cheaper fuel. So I'm going to show from here on in. I get off my soapbox, and I'll show you some pictures of the fleet, and then we can answer any questions. So we bought quite a few Hondas through the years because Honda's been very consistent in providing a...from the factory sedan. And they are our lowest cost-per-mile on-road vehicle. We're...I'm not knocking Ford. Ford didn't make a product, so we had to buy a kit, a CNG kit. We've had some issues with these...with this...I like laying it on the line. So we've had some cold-weather start issues that are unique to this particular vehicle because of the kit that's on it. And we're working with that kit manufacturer to get the problems rectified, and we haven't... we're not there yet. So these have been...they run fine most of the time. The last couple of days, Dr. Archer is ready to wring my neck because these haven't been Real good van kit. This is also a kit, different...made by a different manufacturer, BAF. We've had real good luck with it. Real good luck with all of our pickups. And just to kind of give you an idea, the natural gas tanks are bigger, so on a pickup application, you'll see that it takes up the bed. That is one of the drawbacks. Full-size van is a very good application. A lot of our vans, we can even tuck the tanks up underneath, and you don't even notice...you can't even tell it's a natural gas vehicle. And we have more vans than probably anything else. I have at least 60 of these in the fleet. As we move forward, and we don't have to rely on grants, this might be an option that we want to do. This particular truck runs on both gasoline and natural gas, so you can take your choice just by flipping a switch. Grants don't allow that. I actually got this vehicle from a dealer that ordered...he thought he was going to order propane, and he made an error on his order form. And this is down in Tipton, Missouri, and they said, "Well, that crazy guy in Kansas City might buy it from you." You know, they run natural gas. So we got this without grants on a steal because he was unloading it. We have line-mowing equipment. Kansas City still has ozone alert days, you know? So our air is still bad, you know, in the summertime. So these put out virtually no emissions. So we...the park department is running those during ozone alert days. We have about eight of them right now. A lot of different applications. So utility truck and the water department. There's...we have 35 buses at the airport. And again, just those 35 buses, bus applications are so good for natural gas because they use a lot of fuel. Just 35 buses at the airport use more than my entire fleet, the rest of the fleet. That's going to be changing because we're buying more and more of this type of equipment. And again, this particular application, the first couple of these that we got, we had some issues with because, again, we were first in the nation to get this. We got these units on grant, and I've got some really sharp technicians that have been working with the manufacturer, and we're working our way through the issues, and they've been, you know, we're improving the durability of them. Because, again, that's not...the engine that was supplied in this truck was not original Another application. And then we got 12 of these Freightliners for Public Works, and we've got about a half a dozen for the water department. And because of...here you go, Mr. Mayor. Because of our leadership, purchasing the first in the nation from the other manufacturer that caught...this really did. This caught the attention of Freightliner, and they said they had to get in the game. And they actually leapfrogged International and provided the Westport Cummins natural gas engine from the factory. So these have been bulletproof. These have been bulletproof.
Outstanding.
And that's the same engine that we'll be putting in the buses, and it's very durable. It's made by a company called Westport Cummins. And the second generation of the ones from International, we haven't had any problems with them either. It's just those very first ones. So these are recycling units that Michael Shelley uses in our solid waste division. There's seven of those going through the community, clean, you know? Again, these are a lot cleaner burning than diesel. Picture of some of our stations. Four of our stations. That's the big CNG station up at the airport. Location-wise, the red and yellow dots there are where the stations are located. Kansas City's pretty challenging because it's geographically long north and south. And the new station that we're talking about putting an end on for Public Works is actually in that little triangle. It's right in the middle of that little triangle is the next station we're going to put in down at 5300 Municipal. And that's kind of a site plan for that station, and it will include a public dispenser, which will be our first one that will allow the public to come up and fill at our station. So we're really excited about that. I get...because I get that all the time, that when you're going to open them up to the public. So that'll be our first one. And one of these days, this is a 12-year-old picture, maybe the public will be able feeling like we have been doing for a long time. And I got just a couple more slides. Just so you know, I'm not like a, you know, blinders-on-with-natural-gas. We do buy other types of vehicles. This is a Smith Electric vehicle that we got a grant for, and it's in our park department, and they're using it trimming trees and working on telephone light, you know, the lights. So it's working good in that application. And you've probably seen this one in the city hall garage. This is a pure-electric Ford Transit Connect. This is a pure-electric Ford Transit Connect. And the grant that we applied for through ARA also provided for electric charging stations that we installed in the Kaufman Center, the Performing Arts. And the umbrella, the umbrella grant, the $15 million grant that Kansas City Regional Clean Cities got, that we got $5 million of, it provided charging stations throughout the city. So there's my squirrel. All right, so we're back to the again. Thank you a lot.
Thanks.
That's my presentation. I hope it wasn't too long, because Mark Huffer does, is going to be up next to kind of give update on KC, what KCATAs doing.
Councilman Sharp.
And don't we have some street sweepers on order?
Yep, we do. And I don't have any pictures of those, because they are on order, but we have eight street sweepers that are on order, that will, again, significantly increase our amount of CNG usage.
Councilman Glover.
Quick question. Thank you for the presentation, and the progress is very good and needed and necessary. How do we take this progress that the Municipal Corporation of Kansas City has been making on its own fleet, and take it out into the community at large to encourage other corporate entities and other fleet usage for clean vehicles?
Exactly, that's exactly what we're trying to do this year. And the next step is providing that, that public dispenser, the public CNG dispenser. So that's what we plan to get accomplished this year. That is the next step.
So we're actively going out and talking to other entities in Kansas City, Missouri, corporate entities about the advantages of this?
Oh, they're coming to me.
Oh, good.
I get, I get phone calls all the time. I mean, it's, yeah. But yeah, well, but once we get that, once we get that dispenser in, then yeah, we'll do some outreach. I am actively a part of Kansas City Regional Clean Cities, and they are the alt-fuel exchange for our region. They're the clearinghouse, so, and we're, I've been the Missouri co-chair for the Kansas City Regional Clean Cities for the last eight years, so.
I remember when we brought our first fleet, the idea was to be a leader in the community, so other people would do what we're doing.
Yep.
And that's important.
Yep.
Councilman Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just jumping off of Councilman Glover's comments, and of course, Councilman Sharp, myself, Councilman Davis have been working with CNG to try to get them more into this market. And I think ultimately, there's a private sector interest to do exactly what you're talking about, and it all comes down to the ability and availability of public facilities where they can use CNG, compressed natural gas. And so, we've been trying to assist them to find those areas, find those opportunities. But I think that's the ultimate answer. When the supply is there, then I think the demand comes along with it.
I would agree.
Thank you, Councilman Wagner. Anyone else? Councilman Sharp.
What is the schedule for the next station? Because I totally agree with the comments of Councilman Glover and Councilman Wagner. We want to not only be an example, but we want to help facilitate other corporations in the city using these cleaner-burning vehicles and saving money in the process. And if you don't have enough fueling stations, or hardly any fueling stations, it just retires the progress. Kind of what is the schedule for the station that's going to be on municipal?
Yeah, it's going to be at 5300 Municipal. We have completed the selection process for the Phase II environmental, so that's been done. Our requisition's been cut for that, for that work, and we're moving forward with the contract. So, that's about where we're at. So as far as the timeline, I'm cautiously optimistic that we can get it done by this fall, I'm hoping.
Thank you, Councilman Sharp. Anyone else? Thank you very much, Sam, we appreciate it very much. Mr. Huffer.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. That's a tough presentation to follow, so, and I promise I won't tell you a joke.
Thank you.
Following the city's lead, we are very actively committed into using alternative fuels as well. I think in our fleet, you've probably seen that we do have a Smith Electric truck that we use for cleaning shelters. We have five hybrid MAX buses that were part of the TruMax project. Many of our supervisor vehicles are hybrids. This summer, we're going to be installing propane on many of our non-revenue vehicles. And in July of this past year, July of 2012, the ATA Board of Commissioners passed a resolution stating that from now on, all future bus purchases would be CNG. So we have two buses, two CNG buses on order that will be delivered actually in March. And until the period that we have our own fueling facility, we'll be working with Sam and fueling them at the city's facility. So, we're very appreciative of the support Sam's given us, and really has made it easy for us to get those filled. Currently, we are out to bid, and those bids are due within two weeks, on another 22 to 25 buses, and those will be CNG. We anticipate delivery of those would occur in about 2014. One of the things that we're just now looking at, and that is very intriguing to us, is how to reduce the cost of the buses. A new CNG bus, full-size, heavy-duty bus, is almost $500,000, with, from time of order, about a 14-month delivery timetable. We have found a couple of firms that can actually rehab a old diesel bus into a CNG with a complete rehab, that makes it, again, a 12-year bus, has the full FTA, 12-year standard, and they actually rehab it to such a difference that it has a new VIN number. So practically, it comes out as a brand-new bus at a, less than half the cost of ordering one, and a fraction of the timeline. And obviously, for us, to get our capital costs back, the quicker we can get more CNG buses in because of the fuel savings cost, the quicker the return of investment on our initial capital cost. So, this is a real intriguing prospect for us. It will greatly speed up the time that we can have more vehicles in service, both because the dollars will go twice as far, and the delivery time is a fraction of it. So we're looking into that, and hope to have some decisions made on that within the next couple of months, and we'll be viewing that factory to determine their capacity and viability as well. One of the other things that we're looking at, and Sam mentioned it a little bit, we obviously have to make a significant facility conversion to go from diesel fueling to CNG. Currently, our thought process is, we own land at 18th and TruSt, and we are looking at a joint development project that would make a facility there close to ATA buses, but also have a component of public fueling, so that we could put a separate CNG fueling station open to the public on that land. So we'll be issuing an RFI to get some information on how that can be done, but that's sort of what we're hoping to do in terms of where we end up with our own internal fueling station. So, we're looking forward to continue to work with you. It is a solid commitment from our board to move ahead as quickly as possible, and I think you'll see a really significant difference in the number of buses that are CNG capable in the next few years.
Thank you, Mr. Huffer. Questions? Councilman Sharp.
Well, I'm very pleased to see the ATA board taking that position, as at least, I think some of us know, there are other bus fleets, like in Fort Worth, where they've been all CNG for some time, except for a few of the over-the-road buses. And this purchase, we don't know exactly the number you'll be purchasing, because it depends on the bid, but with what you already have, and these, that's almost 10% of their fleet, you know, right there. And then, if you can find a cheaper method of conversion that still gives you a long lifespan for use of the bus, we can see some real measurable changes. I'm going to ask you, Mark, kind of same question, ask Sam, you're doing the RFI now, and of course, this is what we want to see, not only something convenient for you, but again, another fueling station the public can use. Any idea what kind of timeline we're looking on, looking at as far as the actual construction and operation of it?
Yeah, we want to move as quickly as possible, because while Sam's graciously opened up the fueling station, it's obviously not as convenient for us as to have it on our own property. So, the quicker we can be on our own property, the better it is.
And the quicker you can start saving money.
Exactly. So, we would anticipate something being issued in terms of an RFI within a few weeks, and you know, I would hope that we would have an answer of some kind within, by summer, and maybe have something open late fall, or early 2013, or 2014, I'm sorry.
Anyone else? How is the federal funding for fleet replacement going to affect your plans?
Man, that's a very good question. That's probably the unknown. Traditionally, we get most of our bus replacement money from the FTA, Federal Transit Administration. We have a two-year transportation bill, as you know, that expires in federal fiscal year 14. I think we're pretty good for the next two years in terms of bus replacement. We'll have to see what happens in that next transportation bill, and it's certainly something we're following and working with your lobbyist as well, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, hearing no other questions, I want to thank you both for coming and updating us up on this. This is an area that I know we are kind of hiding our light under a bushel basket. Frankly, it tires me sometimes to go to US Conference of Mayors and hear other cities getting awards for stuff that we did 10 years ago. We should be doing that ourselves, and so I encourage you to, you know, take the basket off the light and let it shine, and talk about the good things. Because if we're not talking about the good things and telling our story, somebody else is going to tell the story for us, and they won't be nearly as kind. So help us out in that regard, and thank you for everything that you do. If there aren't any other questions or statements, Councilman Sharp?
Well, Mr. Mayor, and at the National League of Cities, we have been very visible in sending Jan No, Sam has presented there, so at least that organization, I think we're getting the credit that we should. But I don't think a lot of people in Kansas City have any idea of the leadership role we're taking.
I agree. Thank you both, appreciate it. We have a fairly short agenda today. The next item of business is discussion of ordinances, resolutions, communications on today's docket or for floor resolution, or, I'm sorry, floor introduction. Is there any discussion of any ordinance resolution or communication? Councilman Ray.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I wanted to let everyone know that I'm going to be introducing from the floor. I've had an opportunity to speak with the Chair of Plans and Zoning about an ordinance for Horace Mann School. It is to authorize some additional funds to the contract. I think everyone's aware of the building structure at Horace Mann, and that it needs to be torn down. We have to spend the NSP dollars by March 11, 2013, and the staff is in need of this to be introduced from the floor, so that we can, excuse me, get the process rolling and get the invoices in for more, for the evatement work that has already been done. And so I wanted to allow for everyone to know that I'll be introducing that from the floor today.
All right. Councilman Sharp.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As you and I talked earlier regarding our state legislative agenda, as the council may recall, we adopted our state legislative agenda fairly early this fall, in October, which was very good, because that gives us time to work on it and to let our legislative delegation know what we're supporting. And then later, we added one more resolution, which added two more priorities. Since then, however, a consensus agenda for economic development has been signed off on by all of the organizations that really work in this field in Kansas City. We didn't have that agenda available at the time that we adopted our legislative platform, but I'll pass this copy of it out. I think everyone's seen it, but the agencies that signed off on this are the Greater Kansas City Chamber, the Civic Council, the Economic Development Corporation, the Downtown Council in Platte County Economic Development Council. And we really fostered, in the last term, having such a consensus agenda, because we were hearing from some of our legislators that the chamber had come in with one set of priorities, and the city had have another, and there was a feeling that we should develop a short list of the most important things in economic development. And that has now been finalized by these groups, and all of these are issues that we've talked about and dealt with in our priorities. Angel Investment Act, providing tax incentives for data centers, improving the Missouri Quality Jobs Act, implementation and full funding of Masira, eliminating the cross-border rating for the Kansas City metropolitan area, supporting existing incentive programs, and extending the deadline for use of land-assemblage tax credits, which would certainly help in the Banister Mall area. So all of these are our issues, but we haven't gone back and formally approved this. The other agencies have done this, and just finalized the approvals earlier this month, so it's, I wanted to introduce this from the floor, and so we could formally join them, so our lobbyists can say we formally adopted them as well.
All right, thank you, Councilman Sharp. Anyone else? Nothing else in that regard? Are there any items that anyone wants placed on future business session agendas? Hearing none, then the next item of business is closed session. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to go into closed session to address legal matters and sealed bids and related documents pursuant to paragraph 610.021, parentheses 1, and parentheses 2 of the Missouri revised statute.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we go into closed session to discuss legal matters and closed items and sealed bids related to documents pursuant to 610.021, Run 1 and 12. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Wagner.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kearls.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Sarco, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Markison.
Aye.